Public meeting to order, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we please start with a roll call?
Council President O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. Well, tonight, we're going to start off with a proclamation, and it is Small Business Saturday.
A proclamation, whereas small businesses are the backbone of our local economy in the city of Renton, contributing to the diversity, vibrancy, and character of our community, and where a Small Business Saturday, celebrated on the Saturday following Thanksgiving, encourages residents to shop local and support small businesses during the holiday season and throughout the year. And whereas by choosing to shop at and support small local businesses, individuals can make a significant impact on the local economy, creating jobs and helping to sustain and grow our community. And whereas small businesses in the city of Renton play a vital role in providing goods and services, generating tax revenue and fostering community connections, whereas small businesses often give back to the community by supporting local charities, organizations, and events, further enhancing the social and cultural fabric of our city, and whereas Small Business Saturday serves as a reminder to all residents to celebrate and support our local entrepreneurs, artisans, and service providers. Now, therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 25th, 2023, to be Small Business Saturday in the city of Renton, encourage all residents to support and celebrate our small businesses by shopping locally, engaging with our small business community, and promoting the economic growth of our city. And witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 20th day of November, 2023. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, the move by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, and tonight, to accept the proclamation is the Written Downtown Partnership Executive Director, Josh Sulkind. Josh, let's see a few words.
Thanks for offering me the privilege of being able to accept this on behalf of small business owners in downtown Renton, who I know are working so hard. We know that people come with a dream to be able to build a small business, entrepreneurs, small businesses. So we are excited to support small businesses downtown and help launch entrepreneurs. So the Renton Downtown Partnership is developing relationships with them to come alongside them and help them realize their dreams of small business ownership and make it accessible to all who want to come and have that dream to come around them and help support them progress further. So we're excited to help bring people to promote small businesses, to come downtown, to connect, to shop, live, work, play down there. And so we're just excited to be able to build that relationship and continue as a new executive director to this area, myself, to build all those partnerships and collaboration around that. So thank you very much, Council. Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna take a picture before you sneak off. Okay, we are moving on. The next up is the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. This Saturday, November 28th, is Small Business Saturday. Support our local shops, restaurants, and services by choosing to shop small and make a big impact on our community. Discover unique offerings, enjoy personalized service, and celebrate our vibrant local businesses. Thank you for championing our small business community. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. We're now on to audience comment, and we have a number of people signed up to speak. We also have a number signed up virtually. We're going to do the in-person first. So when I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please give your name, city, of residence, and the topic you'll be speaking on. There's a timer right in front of you, and when the little light hits yellow, please wrap up your comments. Your time is almost up. So first up is Jim Rehorst. Jim?
Marcus, well done, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Hi. I don't often speak here, but it's good to see all of you again. Thank you so much. I live here in the city of Renton, have for a long time. You speak tonight about small businesses. Actually, many of you don't know this, but I own three corporations here in the city of Renton. Been impacted greatly by COVID, inflation, things like that. I've found it just immensely frustrating to not be able to find out where to get help, where to get the money unless I hire a slew of attorneys, what money is left over as far as emergency funds and things like that. I wish we could cut through the red tape a little bit and maybe help small business owners get the help that they need more quickly, myself included. I mean, my income has been reduced by two-thirds. It's a lot of money, guys, two-thirds since COVID has begun. I recognize that not everything can just flow, but city, state, and local governments have made it really, really difficult for smaller business owners like myself to actually be able to access those funds and furthermore, know what those funds are. And I pay a lot of money in property taxes. I also pay my corporate taxes, et cetera, et cetera. But every time that I call one of the city, state, or local agencies, governments, it's a slew of paperwork that takes me a day, day and a half to fill out, and then people don't get back to me. And it's just really frustrating, I guess, on this end, and it has been for some time. You know, being a taxpayer as long as I have, both on the business level as well as the, you know, my property taxes. And I've sat here for a couple of meetings, Mayor, and listened to, hey, we're passing a 1% up on the property taxes. Well, that's really tough for me to swallow. I got to be honest with you, all of you guys. That's kind of tough. We're coming out of COVID. We're still fighting inflation, and my income has been cut, and now we want to raise property taxes. Maybe it's just me. Maybe I'm not educated enough, and that's okay. I know what I know, but I don't know what, you know, how this bureaucracy works sometimes. So any help you guys could give me on that front would be greatly appreciated. Any pamphlets, any websites I could go to, any way to kind of circumvent this miserable process of trying to obtain the funds that were appropriated by the federal government that were passed on, my understanding, to the states and the local governments would be great. But that's kind of what I'm here to speak about tonight. So thank you, guys, for your time. Really appreciate all of you.
Right. Next up is Mike Janjua.
Hello. My name is Mike Janjua, and I'm from Renton, and I have a local restaurant here. As you said, I heard that the small businesses are the backbone of the of the community, and looks like by raising the minimum wage and not providing the proper funding for the businesses like us who suffered, it's really going to break our backs. So there will be no longer backs left here. Not much to say, but please do not pass anything here just because you can't let the public decide whether they really want to pay, put that in a ballot for the minimum wage. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Next up is Diane Dobson.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm city council. Diane Dobson, resident and CEO of the Renton Chamber of Commerce. And while my job is to advocate for business, my political agenda is in regards to supporting the community that I live. I mean, I've been here week after week to ask for support for Renton businesses, whether it be for additional support through the ARPA funding or to repeatedly, over the years, to listen to the voice of the business and to the community you serve, including the business community. Recently, I've heard elected officials say, "I won the election, and the majority of my community elected me to represent them." So with an approach of sensitivity not intended to quash the excitement one might feel of a successful election, I point out, using this election as an example, 15,491 people voted of the 59,077 registered voters. We currently, down from census in 2022, have 1,000, 102,000 citizens in the community. So of those people of our population, only 26% of our voters voted. Less than 15% of our population voted. That means you, as elected officials, have another 86,591 voices to represent. Not just those people that voted for you, but also those people who didn't vote and those people who might have voted for your opponent. You have an elected duty to hear those voices and hear them out. Those who recently went through the election process, you have the contemporary experience of engaging with your constituents, some of you more than others, and as a representative of the chamber and business community, and I've repeatedly done before, and I ask you again, I ask you to listen to the voices of the community that you represent, and I ask you to listen to the business community, reach out, have those conversations, find out how the things that you are voting on impact the businesses, impact the residents in the community. There are a number of items that you're going to be confronted with that the community has asked you for your consideration and vote on. And I know you'll hear from folks tonight regarding various items that pose to impact the businesses and businesses in our city. And as your proclamation tonight proclaimed the importance to the city of business community, especially small business, I remind you, we're coming out of a global pandemic and economic crisis. Businesses were closed for weeks, some for months, and are still experiencing the impacts of the same. We have workforce shortage, consumer confidence and spending is down, and our ever-changing regulations, and people are still trying to wrap their heads around what to do and what not to do. And so, as I come before and repeatedly ask, please consider creating a business grant fund with remaining surplus ARPA funds before those funds hit the general account, and you're prohibited from doing so. And as to other matters that might be presented, I encourage you to take the steps to listen to the community, including the business community that you serve.
Next up is Marvin Rosetti.
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at several screens at the same time, but all of you on the dais already know me. But for the record, my name is Marvin Rosetti, and I am a small business owner and a resident of Renton. And I'm here to speak regarding the council's choice to raise the minimum wage in Renton. And my input for the council tonight is to bring this decision to a vote of the people in February 2024. As you'll hear from many of our other residents, where there are many in this room who are watching in public access right now, it's fair to say that a lot of us who are in this room know more than the average person and definitely more than your average voter. However, if a person like me, who is active, does not have the full legislation, then it's reasonable that those outside of this room do not. And so I ask the council to give local businesses and the opportunity to express their support and their reservations on the legislation. I also ask the council to give the voters the opportunity and the time to see all of the information available. There are arguments where cost of goods sold will change, and there are arguments where the social impact of Renton and raising the hourly rate 20% above the state minimum comes up against the uncertainty of the economy in 2024. Where I don't want to see the injustice towards non-union hourly workers, I really don't want to see a future Renton have businesses filled with large brand-name companies that will, who can afford to operate in the city. I prefer our small businesses that we've seen in downtown, like our Boon Booners, Pop Popcorn, and Premier Meat pies, who've all got the opportunity to develop in the city and gone on to do great things. But again, I applaud those who brought the importance of this issue to the city. And given the current conditions with the information that was made available, I say to let the people come together and decide if we will take on all of these consequences together. I appreciate the efforts of the council to bring this to people, and again, I am supporting of letting the people decide on this very important issue in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Gaston.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good to see your faces here tonight. Name's Eric Gaston. I am a resident of Issaquah, but grew up in this area, spent a lot of time in Renton, and have owned a business here for about eight years. Evergreen Market is the name of my company. We have two stores in Renton, and I'm about to open a third Evergreen Market in Renton, so 50% of our business would be operated here in Renton. We have 130 full-time employees. We provide medical, dental, paid time off, and other benefits, both attract good employees and recognize the efforts of the ones that we already have. Our floor employees, who make up the majority of our FTEs, full-time employees, earn between $6 and $8 an hour in tips, which makes our effective starting wage around $23 an hour already. And I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the money that we can pay our employees. You know, going from, out of a pandemic, going from 1575 to 1623 next month or two months from now, was already really painful for my company. We can't deduct wages as it is. My industry is cannabis. So under the federal tax code 280E, we can't deduct any payroll at all. It comes off the top. Going up to $19 an hour without factoring in tip wages would put our effective starting wage at approximately $26 per hour. And the issue for my company and most small companies and restaurants and whatnot is not every employee is a tip earner. So what happens when you effectively increase that minimum wage up to, you know, $26, $27 an hour is it starts to compress and bump up against the non-tip employees, the managers, the assistant managers, who suddenly are making less money than a budtender or somebody on the floor because of the tips. So what has to happen necessarily, if this were to go through, is we would have to compress that delta in wages all the way up the chain. The bottom line, I had my controller go through the numbers today. It would cost my company $1.5 million if the mandatory minimum wage in Renton goes up to 19 bucks an hour. And again, this is money that we can't write off. It can't, you know, be deducted from our operating expenses. So it's binary. What will happen is we will have to, just to stay status quo and maintain the profitability that we have right now, which is a struggle, we would have to lose $1.5 million in payroll. And that's going to come from people that we have to let go, potentially benefits that we have to cut. And that would be frustrating, and I think it'd be unfortunate and run counter to the intent and purpose of this initiative. Particularly when we're already, right now, as I stand here, paying our employees an effective starting rate of 23 bucks an hour. And I'm sure I'm not any different than any other service industry company. You know, tips make up a large part of wages. The fact that tips aren't included in that minimum wage analysis is a big problem. You know, it needs to be accounted for. It's a wage. It's a tip wage, and we're talking about minimum wages. So as currently drafted, this initiative fails to address any of my concerns. I would ask, as others did, that we let the voters decide. I think dialogue is important and very good, and, you know, hopefully more dialogue would come from having this go to a vote.
I need you to wrap it up here. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Up is Shelley Vogler. Ellie?
Hello, my name is Shelley Vogler, and I was speaking last week about the VFW hall parking, and there was like a technical difficulty, and then I got like cut off of the 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 live stream or the video. So I just wanted to finish what I was going to say, that some of it might be like repeated, but we all had the pleasure to honor the ones who served the past Saturday at our Veterans Day breakfast and afternoon potluck at the hall, and the parking lot was jammed and as it is on most days. So we don't want or need a new park or green space or bike lanes because it will shut our business down. And we keep attending the council meetings, and we speak out our concerns about not wanting to lose our much-needed spaces. We get no response, no answers, and it seems to just be ignored or swept under the rug. We just keep listening to others getting proclamations granted. No one mentions what is happening to the connector progress or how we can stop it. And all the other surrounding businesses have signed petitions, and we still keep getting ignored or reassured that there is nothing to worry about. I feel by the time someone listens, it's already going to be too late. So when can we get the real truth and the trust of the city officials to fight for us and to save our VFW hall and surrounding parking spaces? That will be the only thing that will be able to keep it open. Our patrons need to be able to be in a safe, short walking distance to get to the VFW hall. Thank you, and may God bless all our veterans and our active-duty troops.
All right, thank you. Next up is Alice Lockridge.
Thank you. I am Alice Lockridge, and I'm here tonight with a brief statement. I'd like to speak about two topics. One, I want to speak against the reorganization or the dismantling or the dissolving of the Equity Housing and Human Services Department. And I'd like to speak about the allocation of the $2.6 million. That's the Federal American Rescue Plan Act and that's being proposed. I believe this money should be allocated towards what we've all talked about tonight, small businesses. I owned a small business in the Ritten Highlands for a decade, and I understand their needs. I also am for that money being used to provide human services in the city of Renton and in helping with the housing needs that are so important today. And then the last thing that I would approve of it going for is anything about the COVID pandemic and its recovery. Currently, the $2.6 million are reserved for the Equity Housing and Human Services Department, and that's pending a community needs assessment, as I understand it. But I also understand that you guys are kind of interested in dissolving that before the assessment and results are known. And that you are planning to reallocate the money to, I've heard, like a million dollars for sidewalks and $400,000 to citywide cleanup and $100,000 to human services, all of which are good things, but not the original purpose of the money. To be a productive department, there's a need for more than just an equity manager to do all this equity work. Without a real department, we'll lose the administrator and three staff members, is my understanding. And if we're really going to do that, what will be putting us in a backward slide in the terms of our equity process or progress. We need to keep this department intact, and we need to allocate the federal money to small business grants and human services work. And I thank you for considering these concerns.
Thank you. Next up is Michael Westgard.
Good evening, council. Michael Westgard, resident in Renton. Coming in to talk about the minimum wage. I support it, obviously, and would like you guys to just pass it outright. But I also want to speak against the idea of a pro-con group because you guys were elected to do stuff. We've had the courageous Perma Rivera step up and support us from the beginning. We've even had James Robertson, who I may disagree with on many things, he's come out and stated plainly where he stands, and so has the mayor. You guys just won elections, and it's time to do stuff. So if you're not going to do it, it'll just go to a vote. That's where we collected all the signatures that were needed. Plus, we got more signatures than you guys got votes. So it's like, it's frustrating to continue to run into politicians and political processes and things that just slow things down. You got people that are struggling. This is something that will help them. Yes, I understand there are weights on business, but all those weights that are on businesses and costs and effects from COVID and all these other things that are pushing on them, rent and property tax, all this stuff, that is even double on working people that are living two, three families to an apartment that are struggling. And finally, in closing, you guys did a study in the summer, and you presented on it. And in that study, the majority of the employers in the city of Renton that responded to that study said that they already paid the wage. So I, all the concerns I'm hearing are mostly just stuff that we've heard at City of Seattle, City of Taquilla, every other place, the 250 municipalities across the country that have passed a minimum wage increase as part of the Fight for 15 fight. Those are all the concerns. Every one of those cities, that's not what happened. Businesses didn't leave. They didn't flee. Things didn't fall apart. It's all just fear. While people are suffering, while people are struggling, while you guys talk about and run on public safety and concerns for this and that, help people. Have an opportunity, do something. Or don't, and we'll go to a vote. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next up is Emmanuel Bailey Medio.
And council members, it's nice to be in front of you all again. As the mayor said, my name is Bailey Medillo, and I am a resident of the city of Seattle, and I am here in support of initiative measure number 230023, one of those. Raise the Wage Renton, a initiative that concerns labor standards here in the city of Renton, specifically the minimum wage. And I come to you today as a Renton resident, but I'll be honest, not for long. In the next few months, I'm going to be calling the DMV and telling them that unfortunately, I'm no longer going to be a resident of Renton. I can no longer afford to be a resident of Renton. Like 18 years ago, my mom was kicked out of the city of Seattle because of rising living costs. Kicked out of her home, Chinatown International District, the Filipino community that she organized in, because she couldn't afford to live there. And she came down to Renton with me and my dad to start a family. And now, we're going to play this story again. I can't afford to live in Renton. My mom can't afford to live in Renton. All while we are all suffering and the wages continue to stay stagnant. They have not kept up with the living, with the cost of living. Cities, neighboring cities like Taquila, Seattle, and SeaTac have recognized this concern, and civilian groups and legislators alike have banded together in order to pass proper living wages, proper living wages that directly impact workers, and also And also they have taken steps to provide legislation that protects small businesses and forces these laws on large businesses. And furthermore, make sure that the citizens, the citizens know their rights and they have protections and, and legal protections in order to ensure that their rights are met. I know that my time in Renton is already ticking. Youth in Renton, tens of thousands of youth are, are, are all no longer your future. You're no longer your future here. We are your present. We are the present issue because we can no longer afford to live in this city where we want to raise families, where we want to have jobs, where we want to start small businesses in order to fuel our economy here in Renton. This is no longer viable for many of us. And I rise today not to say this is no longer viable, but to state that I am proof that this is no longer viable. I urge you, we have collected 17,000 signatures, more signatures than many of you have got votes. And again, I do want to congratulate you all on winning your elections. And I want to also, also mention that many people who didn't vote in your last election, people who can't vote, still work. And they still make minimum wage. They still matter. And I urge you to pass this. I urge you to pass this and show solidarity and alignment with the working people of Renton to show that you are capable of legislating and capable of governing in alignment with of the people's needs. And furthermore, avoid a costly special election that will cost the city tens of thousands of dollars that could be used, as many of the small business owners and leaders in this room have mentioned, which I have unending respect for, that they need support. They need money. Let's give them that. Let's legislate together. Let's partner and make sure they have what it, what they need to meet the, the living wage for their workers, to meet a living wage that will keep people like me, young people, the quote unquote future of Renton, although I'm not really sure about right now, since we're all forcing our, we're all being forced out. Give us an opportunity to stay. Give us legislation that protects us. And furthermore, I wanted to end off by saying it has been one of the deepest honors and deepest joys to be one of your constituents. And I hope in the future I'll be able to return to the city, perhaps with legislation that will protect my place in the city and return me to a community that I love dearly, where I've, you know, had my first kiss and you know, my mom yelled at me so many times here. Have a good day. Yeah. Have a good day.
Next up is Ellie Robert Shaw.
My name is Ellie Robert Shaw. Um, and I'm a five-year resident of Renton. Um, I'm here to speak to the council today about the Raise the Wage Initiative. The increase to $19 per hour, I think is an acknowledgement of the sharp cost of living increase here in Renton. Um, for the people making less, the people making less than $19 per hour here in Renton did not cause this very sharp costed increase in the cost of living, um, just like all of us did. But they're dealing with the effects just as we are. Um, I know that my family has been absolutely rocked, um, our budget in terms of um, the cost, um, the increase in the cost of childcare, which has gone up almost 100% for us in the past two years. It's been a lot. Um, and the cost of groceries and gas and absolutely everything else. Um, and I don't think us making less money, um, closer to minimum wage would make that any easier. I think that would make it a lot harder. Um, in terms of just having less room to move things around or make adjustments. Um, just as we've all, we all have had to make adjustments. Um, it is this much harder on the people making, um, close to 19. Um, and, um, so I think that what we are presenting here is not necessarily up to a living wage. There's a modest increase that acknowledges the sharp increase in the cost of living. Um, and it also shows that we value our workers here in Renton. Um, who are essential to our economy. Um, and I feel are truly the lifeblood and the backbone of our community here. Um, and I just appreciate so much, um, all the things that these workers do that make it possible for me to live in Renton. Cause I love living in Renton. I've been here like five years and, um, yeah, I think that they deserve all of this and more. And, um, I, so, um, I'm here to ask you to please just pass this outright and not make us go through a costly election, especially because, um, it's likely, I think that we might actually pass this. So just avoiding all of that would be easier for everyone. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Guillermo Zazuta. Guillermo.
Hey, everybody. Uh, my name is Guillermo Saswet. I am a resident in Renton for the last 22 years, since 2001. I am chair of Raise the Wage Renton. And I want to apologize in advance for my voice. I'm dealing with a nasty cough at the tail end of a viral infection and I am no longer infectious. I promise. Um, I think you know why a lot of us are here today. And I want to thank everyone on council and city staff, of course, uh, for their work on this matter. Throughout this campaign, our team has spoken with tens of thousands of residents in Renton and heard a lot of different perspectives from, uh, business leaders, community members, nonprofit leaders regarding a potential minimum wage increase for the city. And tonight I just have one simple request and that is that maybe all of us here can take some time to consider a more of a big picture approach of what this might look like for workers in Renton. I think first and foremost, what's important to highlight here is to consider who we're talking about when we are talking about a minimum wage worker. Who is that person? And I think for folks on council and folks here observing today in person or online, I want you to consider if you live here in the city of Renton and you're driving down Sunset Boulevard on Rainier, or maybe you're at the landing on the night out in the new restaurant, or maybe you're here nearby in the historic downtown urban center. I want us all to consider and ask ourselves, who are the minimum wage workers that we're talking about? What businesses do we see by proportion on, along these streets? By huge margin, by significant majority, when we talk about minimum wage workers, we are talking about fast food workers. We are talking about grocery store workers. We're talking about department store workers. We're talking about national chains, the Walmarts, the Albertsons, the Safeways, the Targets and more, and the Red Robins. I want each of us to consider, when we go through a drive-through at the local Taco Bell, McDonald's or Burger King, that at any given moment, inside those restaurants, there are at least, and I guarantee you this, four to five people working full-time jobs that have been there for the last eight to 10 years. These are immigrant workers. These are elderly workers. These are youth workers. So maybe on your way home tonight, you're picking up dinner for your family. And you're at the drive-through window. I want you to look inside that window, take a look in the back and see what type of worker we're talking about. These are the workers this initiative would help. So why does this matter? This matters because we are hearing a lot of disingenuous, confusing and misleading commentary that raising the minimum wage would lead to a job loss, that it would lead to businesses fleeing the city and a higher cost of living. While these are important considerations to take, it is worth mentioning here that the majority of workers that will be impacted by this initiative are workers from these industries that I just mentioned. We know that at the snap of a finger, they can raise their minimum wage with no problem. No additional cost to the consumer, no impacted job security and no delays for the future development of the city. I do really hope that each of us can step away from placing the burden of controlling costs on the lowest wage earning worker, when in fact corporate profits are to blame. When in fact, Renton, as a governing body, ought to implement more strict standards when it comes to labor protections, renter protections and protecting our most vulnerable communities.
I need to, I need you to wrap up your comments.
Council has a decision to either charge city taxpayers a near $100,000 price tag for holding a special election or make the obvious choice for Renton workers. In my last comment, thank you. Council has a set of very important decisions to make in the next 20 days. And I am here to let you know that we're all watching closely and that the larger progressive community in King County is watching closely. Progressive elected community leaders that will remember this moment and the choice is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marcus Holson.
Hello, Mayor. I'm, I'm Marcus Holson of Burger Addict and I'm here to speak about what you guys are voting on and the future of Renton. And in particularly, the, the mid, the, the budget and other ARPA funds. And I, and I feel that all of it should be going to small businesses and shouldn't be going into any kind of general fund. Um, I know literally thousands of restaurants are closed in King County, not just in Renton. It was extremely tough just to get things. In my situation, I had two food trucks up, the, the six foot distancing. So I went to, from 11 employees down to three. So I never qualified for any of the federal, the, the state stuff. And so that's what it comes down to. Um, friends are, that have restaurants in the area are down 60 or 70%. There's dining rooms that are still not even open. I think what from my overall observations is everybody's a pretty good person in, in this room and, and they try, want to do the right thing. But as my grandfather would always instill in me, he taught me business. I thought I'd be small. Uh, every, every grandchild was taught business by grandfather. That wasn't the case. The, the issue that I think is that we need to look at what we're doing further because I don't know if there's a disconnect on what's actually happening with the people and the, the small businesses. And what, what I also think should be looked at is like the reaffirming and getting more information about equity housing, human services. The, there, there should be stuff more on boats so the people could go, so such voter low turnout. And I think everybody's trying to do the right thing, but I think we could do it better together than what's going on at some point. And I think the recovery for COVID has been very slow. And I think, um, this area has been impacted for a lot of different reasons. So I appreciate your guys' time. And I would like further discussions before some decisions are made. And I wish everybody would just work together better and be more, better at listening. And that's something I have to work on too. So have a great day and thank you.
All right. Thank you. So now we are on to the virtual, folks that are signed up virtually and the voice in the sky will take over.
Six people signed up to speak tonight. The first person is Sanji Yonzen. Sanji, go ahead.
Her, her timer is not working, so we're going to use my timer.
Okay.
Mr. Yonzen, you're muted.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. My name is Sanji Yonzen. I'm a Renton resident and also a small business owner. I just want to go from the 20 years back when I came here to the United States. And it took me almost five years, you know, under the table working because of the legal status. But 10 years ago, I started my own business. And today I'm here speaking because the journey from under the table work to the business ownership is why experience matter. In recent years, you know, survival for all small businesses has become very tough, closes too common. The city has $18 million, but only the city is allocating $600,000 for the small business. I am totally disagree and disappointed with that. As a small business owner, we need help right now. Merging from the pandemic challenges, small businesses are struggling to stay afloat. The federal funds are here to support, you know, who are hardly hit by the pandemic. So the small business needs support because I, I need, need support because they are very crucial to our community. And I, I acknowledge the various concerns, but now it's a time to keep our, our business moving forward and surviving. As I'm speaking here, I want to emphasize that many concern isn't just my, about my business. It's about the individuals who work or who have become family to the world. As many voices this evening emphasizing the vital role of federal fund in supporting the small business, I kindly request all the council and our elected officials to reconsider and strong support for the local businesses. Uh, as an immigrant who wants work under the table, you know, I understand the struggles of being a small business owner. And this is the time to support our business, support our community. So I hope for the, you know, positive outcome, positive thing. So, um, um, with that, I thank you for listening to me and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person we have is Skylar Schmidt. Skylar, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, uh, Renton City Council members. My name is Skylar Schmidt and I'm the King County Local Government Affairs Manager for Washington Hospitality Association. I'm speaking tonight on hospitality industry concerns regarding initiative 2302, which would put forth a measure on February 20, 24th ballot to raise the wage in Renton. This proposal has several significant problems for our industry. Since your only options are to adopt this proposal or put it on the ballot, we support the staff recommendation of placing this on the ballot. We ask that you do not endorse this initiative and at a future meeting, consider passing a resolution opposing the initiative. This proposed initiative states the wage would be $18.99. This is inaccurate and disingenuous to the public because inflation will be taken into account the date of implementation, meaning the new wage would be $20.29. This would result in an unprecedented 30% increase in minimum wage overnight, hitting businesses in Renton that are still recovering from the pandemic. Any increase in wage needs an appropriate runway and July 1st, 2024 is too soon for businesses to appropriately adjust their budgets for such a large increase. This initiative creates a tiered system that will inadvertently force local small businesses to compete at the highest wage level due to competing for the same labor market. This could be remedied by including a total compensation package in, in an alternative. This has been placed in Seattle and proved to be incredibly beneficial to our smallest businesses. This initiative language is nearly the same as ordinances that are on pause in other jurisdictions due to problems I have highlighted. Please take this into account and do not pass this legislation outright. Place it on the ballot. We, as a small business community, want to create an environment where our employees and customers thrive. We understand that we live in an expensive region, but with record inflation for businesses and small businesses still recovering from the pandemic, this initiative may create unintended consequences for our beloved Renton community. We believe legislating by ballot initiative will create unintended consequences and we hope the council will not endorse this ordinance and instead work with local business owners to address the affordability crisis in our city. Please send this initiative to the ballot in February and at a future meeting, consider passing a resolution in opposition to this initiative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Peggy. Oh, that's right. The voice in the sky has it.
Mr. Mayor, the next person is Peggy Shepherd. Peggy, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. On the consent agenda, item 60, Agenda Bill 3477, adoption of the 2023-24 Amendment Ordinance, the 2024 Fee Schedule and an ordinance amending Renton Municipal Code Title III, Departments and Officers on Page Eight. You're deleting Equity Housing and Human Services Administrator. On Page Nine, you're deleting the Equity Manager. And on Page 184, you have, uh, Section Five, Chapter Three dash five Equity Housing and Human Services Department of Title III of the Renton Municipal Code is repealed in its entirety and marked reserved. And Page 185, Section Seven, the city clerk shall, to the extent possible, revise and replace all references. the city clerk shall, to the extent possible, revise and replace all references to the Renton Municipal Code that refer to the Equity Housing and Human Services Department Administrator to accurately reflect this ordinance's reorganization of that department. So it sounds like Housing Equity Housing and Human Services Department is being taken away. And I understand that it's being put into another department. I come from the city of Snoqualmie and I am a I have been a council member for the city. And I've had homeless people contact me about some of their particular issues. And I do not believe that going into this being put into your planning department will not really address the needs of your homeless. And I know from talking to people in Renton that they are very concerned about homeless encampments. And they want to know, they they're worried about the people that have those needs, they're also afraid of them. So I I'm very concerned about the fact that this funding is seems to be going away without really addressing the full extent of the problem. One of the issues that the homeless person that contacted me is that certain homeless groups do not get along with one another. And sometimes our police department is not handling things civilly. And there's no place for them to talk to people about what their issues are. So you really need someone who is focused on the problem exclusively. It's not just a planning issue. So I that's the reason that I called in and I wanted to share those experiences with you. I've not only worked for a small city of Snoqualmie, but also in my past, I've worked for a large city in Hayward, California, neighbor to Oakland. And we had a program where they had a rental inspection program. And I understand that the city of Seattle is starting to look at that as a possibility for identifying all the rentals and making sure that housing is safe for everyone. So I hope that you take into consideration more than what a planning department could understand as far as how to handle.
And you get to wrap up your your thoughts here.
That that's that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
The next person we have is Charles Schmidt. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor and the council for this opportunity. I agree with many of the previous presenters tonight. I want us to be creative in our deliberations to provide more funding for small businesses as we try to recover from inflation and COVID. By the way, during the last few years, my own business consulting, I helped over 30 businesses apply for PPP. And thanks to Freedom and Information Act and the Renton Reporter, only 15 businesses in Renton received PPP. And unfortunately, very few of those were small businesses. They were lawyer, doctors, accountant firms. Very few had were BIPOC. And so if we have some monies that are available that were intended and came from ARPA, let's be creative and work with the business community to find places for that. For example, my business, I have no employees. I'm a consultant. PPP was not designed for me since I had no employees, but I had to trudge through all the difficulties of COVID too. So I'm just here to advocate that, you know, let's take the offers from the business community and be creative for that funding. And lastly, just as a 20-year homeowner, I'm very concerned about property crimes, the rampant lawlessness that exists throughout our streets. There is like rampant speeding everywhere. I live two blocks from an elementary school and people are doing 50 on a city street. And, you know, we have a great police department and a great chief and they're doing brilliant things, but there's a lack of police presence everywhere and that's why we have lawlessness. So my my hope is that we can better work together to solve some of these issues because I've had a lot of friends in my generation that have thrown up their arms and moved to Yakima or moved to Quarter Lane because Renton is just not where it's at anymore. Let's work together to solve these issues. Elections are over. It's time to fix our problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Voney, City Council members. And to the resident of the great city of Renton, I'm Reverend Dr. Linda Smith, a pastor and community leader, and I come tonight to speak on behalf of those who are marginalized and underserved. Those that are still struggling and and being marginalized by the system, those who show up at our doors every week for rental assistance and food. Our food bank has increased 50% over same period last year. And the Sustainable Food Program is closing. I have followed your your proposal of reorganizing the Equity Housing and Service Department and the allocation of the 2.6 million Federal American Rescue Plan Act. It was and still is my understanding that the Federal American Rescue Act plan was to support and to provide fast and direct economic assistance for American workers, families, small business, and industries affected by the COVID pandemic. The bill included funding for public services as well. But my point tonight is is that that the impact of COVID is not over because people that were most affected by COVID were those who are already suffering from insufficient resources, housing and food insecurity, health disparities, and small business struggling to survive. We have not recovered from it yet. But the city seeks to increase wages of its staff who will already be making sufficient wages to survive. These funds should be allocated to small businesses, human services and housing needs and anything that is due to COVID for recovery. All is not well in Renton. Not everyone is is thriving. Let's not push them back into the cracks. Families are still struggling to pay rent to stay housed. With the increased cost of food, families are barely eating. But if you don't visit the food banks in the areas, you wouldn't know that. If you don't get the calls about people needing needing help with rental assistance, you wouldn't know that. I am disappointed to say the least, as every resident in the city or rentage should be. How do you make a decision without the feedback from the community? How was the community needs assessment integrated into this decision? But yet with all of the human needs, the money is being allocated to sidewalk, citywide cleanup, and pennies to human services. You committed to equity and eradicating social injustices in your Equity and Housing Human Service Plan. And that was one one point was to maximize opportunities created with House Bill 1590, funds to bolster efforts addressing root causes of housing insecurity and support the needs of vulnerable members. So we need a real plan and more than one person to establish a plan to stay focused on the problems in our community. We're being taxed to death with no real solution to human services needs that are continuing to grow. People are still hungry. Food costs have gone up. Kids are showing up at school, living out of cars and vehicles. Food banks are closing, shelters not available. Finally, this is not a political issue. It's a human issue. And we need compassionate leaders who are not only concerned about the wellbeings of their families, but all of its residents and especially the most vulnerable. I believe the funds of the American Rescue Plan Act should be allocated as they were intended to depress and human needs guided by the community, funding food banks, paying rent to keep people housed, creating shelter for those who are still sleeping on our streets and supporting our small businesses. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
The last person we have signed up is Angel Cole. However, Angel is not signed on tonight.
Okay, so, thank you. All right, I know we have some other correspondence.
Yes, sir. I received correspondence from following individuals opposing the minimum wage ordinance in Renton. Jeff and Aaron McNeil, owner or franchisees of the Renton Grocery Outlet. Rachel Glavsky, a business manager for Northwest Gourmet Food Products Incorporated. Skylar Schmidt, who spoke earlier from the Washington Hospitality Association. And Jana House, who is from the Evergreen Market. I will forward all the correspondence to council and the administration following tonight's meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, we are on to the consent agenda. There are six items for council to consider. Are there any that council would like pulled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hearing none, I move council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Council Member Prince, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. You're on to unfinished business. Council President O'Halloran.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the committee, the whole has one committee report.
A committee report, Committee of the Whole regarding the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution, which adopts the City of Renton's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, the CEMP. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman O'Halloran.
I move the council concur with the Committee of the Whole committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Council Member Prince, that the council concur in the Committee of the Whole Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee has two reports.
The first Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding change order number eight to the contract with Pavetta Brothers for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvement Phase Four Project. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve change order number eight to Contract 22163 with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of $232,424.42 for additional work for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
I move that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The final Transportation Aviation Committee report is regarding a request from the Washington State Department of Transportation for a 300-day closure of Renton Avenue South. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the 300-day closure to occur between January 8th, 2024 and February 28th, 2025 for the purpose of extending the Renton Avenue South Bridge to increase the capacity of the I-405 freeway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, this one will be necessary like several others for the widening of 405. And the good news is there's another way off of Renton Hill. So I with that, I move council concur with the Transportation Committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Transportation Aviation Committee Report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. And I have a lot of neighbors that are going to be very upset with. I will definitely hear about that one. All right, Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Aaron.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we are going to move on to legislation where we have three resolutions for adoption and two ordinance for first reading.
Hey, the first resolution is regarding the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the City of Renton Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move the council approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Prince, that the council approve the resolution as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
The next resolution, Resolution 4513, is regarding the amended 2023-2024 fee schedule and lost it here, and adopting capital facility fees and transportation impact fee. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting by reference the current capital facilities plans for the Isipaw Kenton Rent School Districts and current capital facilities plan for the Renton Regional Fire Authority, adopting by reference the Transportation Impact Fee Update Industrial Land Uses Memorandum dated September 23rd, 2022, and amending the 2023-2024 City of Renton Fee Schedule.
Is that my good?
Yes, Councilmember.
I move that resolution to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Final resolution to consider tonight is the temporary full street closure of the Renton Avenue South Bridge. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing temporary full street closure of the Renton Avenue South Bridge over I-405.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, second by Councilmember Perez, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, here comes the fun.
Right, the first ordinance for first reading is regarding the 2023-2024 Bionial Budget Amendment. Here we go, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Bionial Budget as adopted by ordinance number 6088, amended by ordinance number 6110 and 6114 by increasing budgeted revenues and expenditures by $45,804,107 and $32,577,748 respectively, adopting the 2024 Salary Table, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Alberston, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meetings. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Aye.
All right.
And the final ordinance for first reading is regarding amendments to Title III of the Renton Municipal Code. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 314B, section 325, subsection 335C, and section 363 of the Renton Municipal Code, repealing Chapter Five, Title III of the Renton Municipal Code, renaming and reorganizing city departments and positions, updating references to renamed departments, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember Albertson, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay. Nay.
All right, motion carries.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Because we didn't have the discussion. Yes, thank you. You know, as as we are recovering from the pandemic, we actually have a shadow pandemic. And while I understand and I appreciate staff's effort and their diligence in helping to further along the work of equity, I think, I don't just think, I believe in what I've heard from community is loud and clear that the reorganization is really just moving our community backward in terms of equity. When you're talking about setting a goal and having a department for two years, you haven't given it the opportunity to get the infrastructure going and now reorganizing. And with that, we are now giving up the unallocated funds that was pending for Equity Housing Human Services Department to the different departments, but the intent of it is actually not going to what it was intended. We heard community members talking about the ARPA fund and the necessary funds that's needed for small business recovery. And that allocation, while I agree to the designation of public loss sector revenue And that allocation, while I agree to the designation of public loss sector revenue, because we have to do that, because time is ticking, unfortunately, the allocation of actual breakdown of the two point six million is actually not in touch with our community. And for that, I vote nay on it.
All right, all right, we are on to, no, was that the last ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are on to new business. And first, first order of business is we're going to be opening up for nominating a new president. So, all right, I'm going to open the floor for the twenty twenty-four council present nominations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I nominate Councilmember Prince as council president for twenty twenty-four.
Second. Oh, it's all right, sorry.
You don't need to second, yeah.
Still learning.
Are there any other nominations? All right, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President O'Halloran.
I move we close the nomination for the twenty twenty-four council president.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that the nominations be closed for council president. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we elect Councilmember Prince as council president for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President O'Halloran, second by Councilmember Perez, that Councilhead Prince be made the president for the council for twenty twenty-four. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, abstain. I thought we were doing roll call, but we're not.
You don't need to when there's only one nomination, so.
Abstain.
President O'Halloran.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council, Council President.
I, thank you. I move that we nominate Councilmember Albersen for Council President Pro Tem.
I haven't opened the floor yet. Don't have to. Yeah, yeah, okay.
We only do this once a year.
We only do this once a year. That's why it seems a little cumbersome here, so. Okay, I would like to open the floor for the twenty twenty-four council president pro tem nominations.
I'd like to nominate teams over.
Go second.
I know, I'm looking, I know, I'm looking for any other nominations.
You learn quick.
I do, thank you. I try.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we close nominations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Elect Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that we close nominations. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we elect Councilmember Albersen as council president pro tem for twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, second by Councilmember Perez, that we, that Councilmember Albertson be named the, geez Louise, Council President Pro Tem for twenty twenty-four. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, oh, and one abstention. All right, motion carries. We got through that. Now we are on to new business. Council President O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have several items. Next Monday, November twenty-seventh, is a council holiday in honor of the Thanksgiving weekend, and so there are no meetings scheduled for November twenty-seventh. On December fourth, Monday, at five fifteen PM, the Renton City Council and Equity Community Commission will be having a meet and greet in the conferencing center. Again, that's at five fifteen. On December fourth, at five forty-five PM, the Committee of the Whole will be meeting here in council chambers and via video conference. We will have an Equity Commission update. On December fourth, at seven PM, our regularly scheduled council meeting will be held here in council chambers and via video conference. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Did you do the committee on committees?
Me.
Oh, that's you. Oh, that's right, okay. Yes, Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Committee will be meeting on Monday, December fourth, at four thirty PM in the council conference room and via video conference. There are three items on the agenda. First, change order number seven to C A G two, 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 six, five, with Olson Brothers Exclating Incorporated for the Park Avenue Extension, Park Avenue North Extension Project. Second, extension of temporary full-street closure of an eight hundred and fifty-foot-long portion of Sunset Lane Northeast, Jefferson Avenue Northeast, between northeast Tenth Street and Harrington Place Northeast. And finally, third, emerging issues in transportation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, December fourth, at one forty-five PM, the Committee on Committees will be meeting in the council conference room and by video conference, and will be discussing two thousand twenty-four council committee assignments. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Council, Councilmember Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor. But I like to take this opportunity to thank community for coming to speak and to let us know your concerns. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Albersen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-three, the Utilities Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. Two items on the agenda, number one, amendment number nine to C A G dash seventeen dash zero five zero with RH Two Engineering Incorporated for the lift station and force main rehabilitation project. And number two, emerging issues in utilities. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee will be meeting on Monday, December fourth, at three thirty PM. There'll be four items to discuss. The first will be the Farmers Market Report. The second will be the twenty twenty-three Summer Meals Program Report. Third will be the Recreational Division Update, Senior Programs and Adult Athletics. And lastly, emerging issues in our Ever Department, Department of E H H S and Parks Recreation.
All right, thank you. So before we leave, I want to thank Council President O'Halloran for her year of service.
Is it over?
Well, pretty much, but there's a new, there's an election day, these things, so, kind of tradition, so. Yes, Council President-elect.
One, I want to thank you all for your support. I'm looking forward to a great year, and I too want to echo my thanks to Council President O'Halloran for getting us through a very interesting year.
Yes.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, what's the wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor? I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your support, for the vote of confidence for president pro tem, and there you go. Somebody will call me out.
All right. Okay, it's been moved in second. We adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We adjourn.